The Rotary Club of Cupertino presents City Council Candidate Forum 2014, featuring the eight candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now your moderator, Richard Lowenthal.
Yes, I sat in these seats here before. But I'm more proud of being a former president of Cupertino Rotary. What a great group to be in front of. And I'm thrilled to be asked to moderate today. I am a former council member, so I can tell you I'd rather stand here than sit there. I've done both. I noticed, coming here today, one of the things -- Sandy and I were on the council in the previous millennium, if you can believe that. And, you know, one of the things we used to say is that things were economically kind of rocky in Cupertino when we were first on the council. And we used to say, "Oh, we don't have to worry about parking problems. Bring in some retail, it doesn't matter. We've never had a parking problem." And so we used to make a joke that Cupertino would never have a parking problem. I am proud to say now that if you go to Pete's Coffee on Stevens Creek Boulevard, you probably have experienced it. And I experienced it here today. So you need to celebrate. We have a parking problem. At least somebody wants to come to Cupertino and spend some time and go to our restaurants. So it's turned out to be a good thing. I want to thank the council candidates today. You're not going to be allowed to cheer for them during the presentation today because we don't want to make this a verbal vote. And, oh, and I should say, you're not allowed to jeer either. So you'll have a chance at the end to applaud the whole group for standing up and offering to help run our great city. And it is a sacrifice. My wife Ellen is here. She can testify to the fact it's a sacrifice. The family gives a lot to serve here. And the pay is enormous. I think it was $614 a month. And for that, you work a lot.
Twenty-three.
Oh, it's gone up! So, but, you know, you do it for the love of the city, and certainly we have that. And these folks here are showing that today, that they want to stand for you and help run a city in a great way. So I thank them all for coming today. We need to thank these folks over here with the cameras. The City Channel does a great job of this. It will be the most professional presentation. And Robert, Pete, and Ray have been -- I've been hanging around them for probably 15 years now. They are incredibly good. And, you know, when you hear their voice on the City Channel, you just think you've got one of the professional broadcasters in the world. They do a spectacular job, and it is a lot of work. It is not just standing here behind the camera. This building is not equipped to do this. But we thought the parking is so bad at the library, because the library is so successful, that it would be better here. It's a little better parking here. But for that, they had to move their whole operation to the Quinlan Center. So thanks to the City Channel very much. Okay, so Cupertino Rotary is proud to put on this forum today. Cupertino Rotary is here to serve others. And the way we can serve you best today is by helping you meet some candidates and maybe help you make the right choice for our city. So this is about informing you. And we do this. There's kind of nothing in it for Rotary beyond informing our residents so that they make wise choices, which of course will affect us all. So we're happy to do that. The -- I think, you know, Cupertino Rotary has been here for now nearly 60 years, 60 years and a few months. I think we predate the city by a little bit. We're about the same, anyway. About the same age as the city. So we've been here the whole time. We're happy. We're a growing club, and we're happy to provide this service today. So without that, let me tell you a little about the format. The candidates will each get one minute for an introductory statement to talk about why they ran, what they want to do. And then we have some questions, and we'll go to the candidates with the questions. Every candidate will get a chance to answer the question. They'll each only get one minute to answer each question. If they go over, which I used to do, and politicians have a way of liking microphones, they will only get a half a minute in the next question. So, and we have the enforcer is down here. Daryl Stowe, if you could give him a round of applause for being the enforcer. Because we do like to go on, as I am proving at this moment. So, without further ado, we have our -- I just got the 15-second warning from Daryl. We have our candidates here. I'm going to let them introduce themselves. I'm not going to introduce them. They are here. Their names are in front. Hopefully, by the end of today, you'll know them. But I'll let them each introduce themselves and why they're up here today. And a prize goes to whoever figures out how we selected the order. It's all pre-arranged. So for the first minute of your time, let's talk about yourselves. Ooh, I don't know. Ah, there. So the order, we're going to go -- for the first question, we're going to go down this way. So we'll start with Andy Huang, who will introduce himself and talk a little bit about himself. He gets one minute. Daryl, you're on.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Huang. My wife and I came to the city of Cupertino 13 years ago, attracted by the outstanding schools, diverse cultures, and vibrant lifestyle. Today, Cupertino faces some growing pains. Traffic hinders our productivities and threatens our children's safety. High-density housing impacts traffic, parking, roads, and our schools. As your city councilman, I will limit high-density housing, champion for our children's safety, and relieve from traffic. I'm running for city council because I want our city to grow responsibly, develop housing carefully, promote vibrant retail shops, protect our air line and water, and above all, preserve our quality of life. I've served you for over 4,000 hours. I'm the only candidate receiving both the CREST and the President's Volunteers Award. Vote for me, I'll be your voice. Andy, thank you.
Very good. Perfect on the timing. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Barry, you're next. A high standard here on that timing.
Second offense, you get no time at all. My name is Barry Chen. I'm running for redactions. I have accomplished a lot. I have kept my campaign promise back in 2009. We resolved the dog park issue, and we forced DHI to cut mercury by 90%, which I, you know, campaign promised for this public safety and health. And then also approved the Apple Campus Two project. That means $5 billion construction jobs stay in the area. And then when they're done by 2016, 12,800 R&amp;D jobs will stay in the area. I want to run because, as you know, the traffic is getting worse and worse. I just went to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group meeting this morning. Generally, it takes 10 minutes to get to Mountain View. It took 40 minutes for me to go on local. So traffic is an issue. Housing is an issue. The environmental issue is still an issue. Even DHI agreed to cut down 90% of the mercury. Still have a lot to go. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Darcy. Good job, Barry.
Hi, my name is Darcy Paul. And I'd like to take about 10 seconds of my one minute to welcome in, as of Sunday morning at 12:58, our newest Cupertinoan, Annabelle Elizabeth Paul. Thank you very much. So I moved into Cupertino about 10 years ago, and I'm currently the president of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, as well as the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm running so that we can restore a sense of fairness and efficiency and keep going on the right track with respect to those particular principles in city council. I think we need to be honest and civil with each other, and I think that there are a lot of different problems around town that we can address. We're a very well-educated and intelligent community, and all of the problems that we're identifying here can be addressed with respect to the right approach. I'm a Harvard Law graduate in 2003, and I opened up my own practice after 2009, running in the city council here in Cupertino. So I just wanted to be able to bring the right approach, and if we have the right kind of conversation and bring an intelligent and thoughtful approach to city council, we can get a lot done. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Don, Don San?
Good afternoon. My name is Don San. This is my eighth year as a Cupertino Rotary Club member, and I'm honored to be in the Rotaryans, and I enjoy the spirit of serving above ourselves. My education is unique, and I got my undergraduate study in urban planning and my master degree in the University of Pennsylvania as a regional economics. I studied in the Hoover Institute and Stanford University for the Taiwan Urbanization. And I have been city planner for two years in China. My unique education background plus my four years' experience as a city planning commissioner gave me the best experience and education to work, make best decisions for the city. And I believe the key to move cities forward to build a consensus and the community together. And I serve as the vice president of the Cupertino Historical Society. I want to work with two public schools, with city, to solve the traffic issues, and also advocate for senior housing and keep senior in Cupertino. As a public servant, I will work for you and work for you only. Thank you.
Very good. Mark Santoro.
Hi, I'm Mark Santoro. Most of you know me. I'm a council member and former mayor. I'd like to start by thanking all of you on Rotary for hosting this. I think it's great to let people be informed and see who they're actually going to vote for. I would especially like to thank my fellow candidates up here who are willing to donate the time and put themselves through this process. And if you've been through it, know it's an arduous process. And I really want to congratulate and thank all of them for being members of the community wanting to serve. I also want to apologize for not being to the last Globe Elegance, but I was a little kind of tied up at the time. So sorry, Amy and the rest of you, but I enjoyed those of you that came to my house the year before. On the council, I worked hard on fixing the roads. Our budget's now 10 times what it was. I worked on school traffic issues, ditto with everything Barry said, being on the council. And I know that there's one burning question in all of your minds, so I'm going to address that right now. Thank you.
Robert McCoy.
Hello, my name's Robert McCoy. I am a husband and a father of two awesome children. Currently, I am the vice chair of the Public Safety Commission. And as a council member, I will continue to work on public safety, making it a number one priority, that we have the safest city around, the highest response times as well. I will also work on environmental safety issues, and I will try to address the traffic congestion issue as well, and hopefully expand our agreement with the school to better our education for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good timing. And Savita Vaidejanathan.
Thank you, Richard. Hi, I'm Savita Vaidejanathan. I'd like to thank the Rotary Club of Cupertino and Richard for hosting this important forum. We all love Cupertino for its great schools, open spaces, and diverse community. My husband and I have lived here for over 20 years, and our daughter went through the Cupertino public school system. I have devoted the last 10 years to serving this community. After I earned my MBA, I worked with businesswomen entrepreneurs and volunteered to help business students. On the Dianza Commission, I continue to support youth who are in need. I have addressed the various needs of our community through service in Rotary and West Valley Community Services. I'm very passionate about three things: youth, environment, and seniors. And yes, that spells yes. I'll collaborate with our schools so our students will have incubator hubs to foster their enterprising spirit. I'll protect the environment by preserving the quality of air, water, and land while mitigating vehicle air pollution. I'll help create options for our seniors to thrive independently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should mention, there is one other candidate who didn't come today, Michael Hunzweck. I assure you that we reached out to him. I sent him three messages, and Rotary Club sent him three messages, and the city clerk did contact him and said he would not be coming today. But you will see him on your ballot, and we regret not being able to present his story here today. So now we're going to get into the questions. The questions that I'm going to ask the candidates have been submitted by the community. I asked broadly for people to submit questions to me so that I could edit them down to a core set. We don't have a lot of time because we have a lot of candidates. That's a wonderful luxury, you know? You'll have a lot of great people to choose from, but for today, it makes it -- so we have to do sort of the lightning round here. And again, they'll only have one minute to answer a question. This time, we'll start at the Savita end of things and work the way back this way so nobody has to be last every time, or first, depending on what you fear. So here's your first question. Recently, probably the premier political analyst in California, certainly he is, Larry Gersten, came and addressed our club. And we talked about the politics of California. And it's kind of a different story than a few years ago, where it was pretty rough. But this year, he was pretty helpful or pretty complimentary of where we are in California. But, you know, we talked about the Washington DC and the problems there. And in the end, somebody in this audience asked him, "What's the one thing that concerns him most about the governance of our state and nation?" And he said, "It's civic engagement." That is, in the previous election, less than 30% of the people voted. 23% of the people here voted. Now, it was a primary election, so we don't, you know, that's, we don't quite come out, but 23% isn't very good. In the last city council vote, we had only 9,000 people of the 58,000 people here vote. And we also need people to serve on commissions. We need people to volunteer. It's part of the strength of Cupertino. It's always been a strength. A great volunteer base has been a strength here. So the question to the candidates is, what can you do to encourage civic engagement, whether it's voting or participating in our community? And we'll start with Savita.
Thank you, Richard. One of the things that's beautiful about our community is we have a lot of immigrants. And not all of them understand all issues. So one of the things that I've been doing is educating my friends and family members and spreading the news to all the young people who are just 18 and over, 18 through 25, telling them how it is important to be involved in the community. And by being engaged in different things like the commission, and the council, and Rotary, and other agencies in our community, you can understand what issues face your local area. And then you can go on to looking at the other issues in the state as well as the country. People need to be engaged in their community only then they'll understand the larger issues. And that's been my effort for the last 10 years, and I'm continuing it through my campaign by talking to people when I'm walking the neighborhoods. And those who don't know what the city council is, I'm educating them on that and telling them they absolutely need to exercise their right to vote. Thank you very much.
Robert, what's your take on the question of civic engagement?
It's a great question. As a CERT member, I know that the biggest asset for a community is for us to be able to rely on one another in the time of need. I think that we need to recruit more volunteers for the city. As a commissioner, it's very discouraging when we go to a meeting and no one comes in to give oral communication. It's their right, and we would love to hear from the public their concerns and complaints, however, no one does most of the time. As well as I go to all city council meetings, there's only five people in the audience at every meeting on average. And I think that that room needs to be filled. The people's voice needs to be heard. People need to know what's going on and be aware of what's happening within the city. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I can remember some city council members with meetings where it would have been okay if fewer people had come, but that doesn't seem to be the issue today. Mark?
Thank you. I think the most important thing that council members forget is that not everybody shows up at a council meeting, and everybody watches a council meeting. If you want to get people involved, you need to go out and reach to people. There's four commissioners up here that I all met before they were on commissions and had the honor of being able to vote to put them on the commissions. I'll give you a story about one. I was knocking on a door. This nice lady answered the door, asked me a lot of hard questions. I said, "Wow, you're really involved." She goes, "Well, I'm involved with CERT and First Aid Things and stuff like that." And I said, "You should get more involved in the community." She goes, "Well, you should meet my husband, Andy," who's now competing against me, so you've got to be careful when you get people involved. But I think you just need to reach out to people and get them involved. One of the things that I work really hard on is trying to get people involved. I wish I could do a better job. I'd like to get more of you sitting in the audience up here someday and people watching. But I think you just need to really reach out to the people who are shy and won't come to a meeting to speak out. Thank you.
Very good. Don?
Yeah, all people know I'm a new immigrant to this country, but in the past 20 years, I have done 10 years free public radio talk show about monthly book review. I read books every month and talk to Chinese audience and tell them what's the mainstream and American people think about this country, politics, and history. This is one thing. The second thing is I'm a executive director for the APAPA. That stands for Asian Pacific Islanders Public Engagement. I have been there for the executive director for the five years. Our job is just ask all Chinese new immigrants, go to the pool to vote. Almost every Chinese superstore here, I've been standing there, sending the booths, sending to the voter registration form. And now it's the, I pass this job to my friend Chris Zhang there. And we have done a lot for the Chinese community, ask them to come out to vote, to get engaged in the service. Thank you.
Darcy.
If you could raise your hand if you live in Cupertino here. Would you mind? Okay. So just so I know who I'm talking to here. All right. So with respect to civic engagement, when I ran in 2009, I attempted to go to every door in Cupertino. And there are 55,000 residents here. And if people happened to be not registered, I ended up giving them registration forms. So I think that, in its purest form, is trying to encourage civic engagement. But with respect to getting elected, bad strategy. You have to try to target your voters with respect to getting the most amount of votes. I think that's going to happen this time, and I'm completely behind the message of this campaign. But in terms of getting more people out there, I think there is tremendous potential on this panel here for everyone to be knocking on doors and saying, "If you're not registered, go ahead and register." So I think that's a serious discussion, and if we can get candidates to start participating in these voter registration-type drives, that's a great start. Thanks.
Barry, you're up.
Number one, registered voter. Out of 58,000, roughly 58,000 residents in Cupertino, about 28,000 registered to vote. So if you don't register, you cannot vote. This American system is different than a lot of democratic countries and other parts of the world. So registered to vote. I've been registered people to vote since Tommy Hsu's time. So that was a long time ago. If you know who is Tommy Hsu, who is serving the first term, Chinese-American to serve on Cupertino School Board. So that was at least 10, 15 years ago. So registered to vote. Number two, if you're the civic leader, listen to the constituent. I see the city council member put the item on the last, the important item, and until midnight, 2 o'clock, who is going to attend. So if you really want to listen to the constituent, you really sincerely listen to them. You don't have to agree, but then you have to listen. Thank you.
Very good. Andy?
I think the best way to encourage civic engagement is lead by example. Two years ago, Councilman Santoro and Councilman Chen, and also our current mayor, asked me to engage and enter the candidate race. I declined at the time because my son was still in senior year in high school. The timing wasn't right. This time, I'm here because thanks to our leaders and their encouragement, I'm here. So how do I lead the others by example? I've joined the Citizen Corps for the city of Cupertino. I've also served for the Santa Clara County, the MVDR, the Medical Emergency Disaster Team. I also serve for the American Red Cross for the entire Bay Area. In addition, thanks to our council members' leadership and encouragement, I've been the chair of the Public Safety Commission twice. And this is my way of encouraging all the volunteers in the community to engage and participate with the city of Cupertino, but also, more importantly, not only city of Cupertino, but also expanding their volunteering to the county and to the whole Bay Area. Thank you.
All right. Very good. The next question is the one that was most popularly submitted. So it's very interesting. It's close to my heart. It's an issue that I ran in back in last millennium and worked hard on while I was a council member, so I'm glad to see that other people remain interested in it. The question is this, and we're going to start this time with Don. We're going to go down that way, come back around this way, and go this way. Can you handle that? I'm hoping. I'm not going to remind you how it works, so we'll start with the -- okay. And the question is this: How can we make Cupertino a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly community? And are you willing to spend money on it, to commit some budget to it? And what do we need from the leadership to make progress on that issue? Don, you're first.
Okay. This is my first agenda on my website, to pave the Stevens Creek and Dianza for the green bike lane. I put there six months ago, and now I see on the Stevens Creek, there's some green bike lanes on there already. I ride bike, and as most people do, and I see which parts on the street, they have a hole, they have a pedal. And I, also, it's my two sounds. One is riding bike to the school, and I know exactly what bikers are like and what's exactly how dangerous if we're riding along the street. That's why we have a budget for the bike in the city budget. For me, if you liked it, this is one of my best, the first top priority, to make Cupertino bike pedestrian-friendly city. Thank you.
You got it, Mark. I was just testing to see if you could remember.
So, it's a good test right now. There's a lot that can be done. When I first got on the council, people said, "Don't worry about school traffic. There's nothing that can be done. It's only going to keep getting worse." I worked hard to get the council to put some funds forward and had the bright idea one time of getting the teens involved and assigned the teen commission to work on getting kids to walk, bike, and carpool to school. Out of that became the WOW program, which I think you're all familiar with. We've added crossing guards. We put money into bike lanes. A couple council meetings back, we just assigned and asked the Bike Ped Commission to prioritize what things they think needed to be done first. We started restriping some lanes with the bright green. I'm sure you've all seen those. And we've added additional bicycle lanes. In some areas, it's difficult, but we're doing everything we can to get the cars off the road and get more people walking and biking. Thank you.
Robert?
I'm the former liaison to the Bike Ped Commission. I'm very well aware of the issue of bike-friendly neighborhoods and safety for bikers. The bottom line is it comes down to, we need to have more compassion for the bikers. The bikers also need to work in cooperation with vehicles. And some bikers out there think they own the road, and some actually obey the laws of the road. I believe with the Sheriff's Department, we could do enforcement and education operations, and we could increase the safety for the bicyclists. Right now, we only have bike to work one day out of the year. I think that it should be every month or quarterly, or we need to welcome it. And also, at the same time, by having bikes, we're reducing traffic and congestion on our streets.
Savita?
When my daughter was going to school, I would encourage her to walk and bike, and there was less traffic then. Now, when I'm walking the neighborhoods, the primary concern of most of the residents is traffic, and they don't want their kids to bike. So obviously, we need to make it safer. The green lanes are a great addition. And what more can we do? We can add trails which are not necessarily on the road for the kids to bike to school or walk to school. And I'm really excited from what Larry said about the bike rodeo. That's really exciting that the city is doing something like that. I'm looking forward to that. And when I spoke with the city staff, one of the things they said was, "Kids under the age of 10 can actually ride their bicycles on the sidewalk." So if you're walking with your kid to school or biking with them, if the child is under the age of 10, they can actually be on the sidewalk. So I'd really like to work with the city, absolutely have a budget to have more bike lanes, and get our kids to school safely. Thank you.
You're right. You're next.
One of the main objectives, serving on the Public Safety Commission, is to encourage walk, bike, and carpool to school. And we've been very, very successful, thanks to the grants from the city council, that roughly about 50% of the kids that we do survey at all of our 11 schools walk bike and carpool. But the question remains is, what happened to the other 50%? Why don't the parents of the other 50% don't feel safe about allowing their kids to walk, bike, and carpool to school? So one of the key issues is, they don't feel their kids will be safe biking. So in addition to the green, painting the bike path green, I believe maybe we can borrow from one of the schemes from European countries. They actually raised the bike path to the same level as the sidewalk. So this way, they no longer are sharing the roads with the traffic. Thereby, we can protect the safety of our children as well as all the bikers. So if I were elected as a council member, this will be my first proposal to our city council and to our community at large, to protect the safety of our children. Thank you.
Barry?
A couple ways to do it. One, we can designate certain street, make it a one-way street, and then so add it to by then in the same direction as the car. So that needs some work from the city engineering, traffic engineering department. And then also, number two, encourage the bike-walk, carpool to school longer, because so far, it's one week. And every time, every year, I kept asking, can we extend it to make it three weeks? And then also, number two, encourage the bike, walk, carpool to school longer, because so far, it's one week. And every time, every year, I kept asking, can we extend it to make it three weeks? Because as you know, to make it habit, you have to do it three weeks. If it's just one week, seven days, it's not going to do it. You want to accumulate and custom, make the children feel accustomed to it, you know, so for 21 days. And then, of course, increase the incentive. So far, we have the iPad for the kids if they do the good job on the walk-by to school. We can increase that, too. So there's many way to do, and I also propose to have the bus around the traffic during the school hour, but VTA is not interested, but we have to continue doing it. Thank you.
Darcy, you get the final word.
All right. Great. So the Walk One Week program was actually something that came out of Parks and Recreation Commission. I've been on that commission for seven years, and we spent about four or five years nurturing it, while actually, one particular high schooler, Shalley Samar, was very actively involved in it. And so, you know, that was a great experience. I think the green bike lanes are really excellent. You know, you go up Stevens Creek, and you saw them along Santa Clara. So I think that, you know, the thing that we've seen in Cupertino in the last four or five weeks, adding those green bike lanes are great. One thing I want to add to what everyone else has said, which are really great suggestions, is that we need to focus on park deficiency in Cupertino. Because if you add parks to particular areas, people tend to go towards them, be it by walking or by biking. And there are particular areas around town. I want you to think about the Lawrence Expressway corridor, and in the Rancho Rinconada area, there's a triangle of space that we could potentially put a park there. And it actually joins a path that goes up and down Lawrence. And if we kind of focus our attention on these particular areas in town, we can make more interconnectivities and also improve those areas of town at the same time. So thanks.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you all for your responses. The next question, I think, is, I think it's going to be an upcoming, interesting issue for us to tackle. As you probably all know, Apple is building some large new facility in our city. And to my surprise, they've told us that they are not going to be leaving their other properties. They are in something like 23 properties around the city. Like in my neighborhood on Bub Road, they have a lot, they're occupying a lot of properties. So that means 12,000 new families to Cupertino. Cupertino has 23,000 families now, so an additional 12,000 families here working in Cupertino will be an interesting thing for us to absorb. And the question today is about, what are we going to do about housing? Shall we put them up in the hills? We've got some great hills that have very few homes in them. Shall we do high-rises? I hear some people don't want to, they don't want to do anything, any more density in the downtown area. Or shall we run them up and down on 280? Because 280 has no congestion, we can just have them all live somewhere in another community. But those seem to be our three choices for these 12,000 new families here in Cupertino. So what are we going to choose? And for this one, I think we'll start with Darcy, and we'll go around the other way, just to confuse you. So Darcy, you're first up.
All right. So, you know, as we're growing, we're having more density issues, and Cupertino is creating some jobs. We've done that at the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce for the last five years. And, you know, the economy is revitalizing. But as everyone who's been here for any appreciable amount of time knows, the economy goes up and down. Now, with respect to density, we do need to make sure that we, A, listen to residential input. At the end of the day, the people that live in Cupertino are the ones that are vested with respect to the civic engagement and the enfranchisement of the vote. But with respect to what's responsible, we have to make sure that, as Richard is saying, we take a look at what's going on in terms of the population and what makes sense with respect to the various areas around town where we could have it. But I think we need to have a balanced conversation, a civil and honest one as well, between the residents and developers coming in, and to determine what spots around town make the most sense. So I think it really is in the conversational approach that we take this, and we will be successful in the long term if we keep those principles in mind. Thanks.
Barry, you're up.
Since I've been on the council, this is my fifth year, so I have a little bit of experience dealing with a developer and also the company. Like, for example, Apple Campus 2 project, I did run into someone and say, why you guys approve it? Why don't you guys ask him to, ask Apple to move somewhere else in the desert in Nebraska? I say, well, it's not what we ask them to do, because they have their choice. Company have to make a decision how they're going to compete. Okay? For example, this morning, I just went to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, Game Changer, okay? All the CEO there from the big company, bigger size, like 85,000 employee into smaller 500 people employee company, their question is the same. Number one is traffic congestion. Number two is housing. We got to deal with this two head-on. This is Silicon Valley of the world, the high-tech center of the world, and then our public transportation is embarrassing, embarrassing. And housing, if we don't deal with it, find a solution, we're going to jeopardize the business segment. So we have to deal with it. Thank you.
So what are we going to do with those 12,000 new families?
As an entrepreneur, I have traveled around the world whenever I have my own business. And one of the things I learned from all the other cities internationally is, we are not the first city to face this problem. There are many cities like Tokyo, Shanghai, Beijing, Paris, London, all face similar problems when they have a premier company that had just entered their city space. So one of the key features of all these big cities, how they deal with it, is to significantly increase the public transportation scheme. If you look at, in addition to the Apple campus, we also have 20,000-plus Densa students that's commuting to our city every day. So the best scheme for us is, in order to maintain our vibrant growth economically, we want to invite these additional students and employees come to Cupertino. But at the same time, we need to rebuild our infrastructure for public transportation so they do not have to live in Cupertino. Thank you.
Good. We're down there at your end, Savita, if you didn't see.
Just imagine if Steve Jobs hadn't come to the city council and told us about the spaceship campus. We would not have it. Yes, there are challenges, and we need to balance housing growth with traffic and everything else. But we need to keep in mind that these challenges are what we face in a growing city. They are growing pains, and we need to figure out a way how to address them. And I do know that the state does mandate that we add additional over about 1,000 units. And if we do that along the transit corridor, then that will help us at least with mitigation of traffic and have people use the public transit. And also, request VTA to designate some areas as the development area, the priority development area, then we'll get more funds from VTA for that. And if we work on it with a holistic approach, I'm sure together we'll find something that will suit all residents and make it convenient for them to get to work. Thank you.
You're up, Robert.
The growth of the city is coming whether we like it or not. It's unavoidable. It's going to happen. We need to make sure it's done in a responsible manner that doesn't impact our way of life that we are accustomed to here. We need to make sure it doesn't impact our emergency service response times, and we need to make sure it doesn't create more traffic and congestion on our city streets. We need to look at alternative methods of transportation to address the oncoming flood of more cars hitting our streets every day. We're going to have major congestion from this project, and we need to mitigate it as soon as possible with any alternative methods we can find. Thank you.
Mark.
I think it's great that Apple decided to stay in our town, and I think it's great that we were able to retain them. Most of their employees don't already live in, already don't live in Cupertino. For those of you that were watching the last meeting when the campus was approved, near the end of the meeting, I asked Apple if they were willing to contribute to a traffic study to figure out if we could do something to improve traffic congestion around their campus. And they agreed to put up a million dollars toward that study and to help in the future. These are the things you can kind of do. With regards to housing, I feel that the most important thing you can do as elected official is actually represent the people who elected you. And the people in this town don't want a lot of high-density housing. In the couple years before I was elected, there was 10 times as much high-density housing approved as has been approved since I've been on the council. Thank you.
Don, final word.
Yeah, in the past four years, I was planning commissioner, and my colleague Marty Miller was chair, and now is Paul Brophy. We're facing similar question almost every month. The residents come into our public hearing and challenge the decision, and you can view the TV review on the city website. Every time we vote, it's the, we visit the site, take a look at the decision, balance the interest of our community and development. We want the city developer smartly, and we cannot fully stop the development, but we want the city grow smartly, moderately. I've been on the planning commission for four years, and also, I have experience on the planning, city planning experience. I think it's in the next five, 10 years, in the general amendment, general plan amendment, we can observe all the public opinion and put together. I believe we can grow smartly. Thank you.
So I tried to trick this group into a multiple-choice question there, but they didn't bite on hillside's density or highway. So I think they're prepared to lead. So, next question. We have a, this kind of is maybe a little bit linked to the previous question. We have a high concentration in one business in our city. And because of that, we have a high dependence on them. The, number one taxpayer for us is Apple, and yet, we used to have a little bit of diversity. We used to have a little HP and a little bit of Symantec and a little of this and that, but it's getting to be pretty focused. So that's a concern, and I'd ask what we can do about that. But beyond that, also related to business, we seem to be building a lot of retail space. We, you know, I was at Valco last night going to the movies, but I noticed there weren't a lot of, wasn't a lot of action downstairs at Valco. And there seems to be some empty spaces on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and we're building a bunch more at Main Street. So what are we going to do to fill those business locations with businesses that the people out here want? Places that they want to go shop, or things that make our tax, our tax situation not so tenuous as being dependent on one company. And this time, we'll start on your end, Andy, and work our way down.
As we mentioned earlier, there will be over 10,000 employees from Apple, 20,000-plus students from Densa, and plus 60,000 Cupertino residents. So we do have the consumption power to make Valco a success. We can learn from the success of Santa Monica Mall and the Westfield-San Francisco Center of Norenstrom and Bloomingdale. Each of them has successfully renovated their mall and brought in all the food traffic necessary with some of the unique features. So if you look at our city, if you look at BJ Elephant Bar, they are so busy that we cannot find a parking space. Why can't we invite some similar restaurant chains, maybe Wolfgang Puck, to the Valco Mall? So this way, we can increase the traffic in Valco and reduce the parking space problems for BJ's and Elephant Bars. Okay? And once you brought in the food traffic from these restaurants, then we can invite the retail shop to come in, because they will come in once they notice a significant increase in the food traffic from the restaurant business. Thank you.
Barry.
Valco has been, everybody has been talking for years, so it's time for improvement now. I know it's going on now, it's just probably, within the next few years, you will see some difference there. The way the operation, you know, you see some of the area is, some of the retail space was not too good, but then when they changed it, the different store, then the business is so good. I mean, look at the 10th Tower in Stevens Creek, that area, that's small shopping strip, used to be just nobody there. So now, you cannot hardly find a parking there. So it's a way of operation, then we have to, the city have to cooperate and then help with the developer, because it's not one-sided, as I say earlier. It's not what city want, and also, you have to cooperate with the developer, what they want, and then also, what the citizen want. So it's a three-way, you know, negotiation. And on Apple, I'm glad to tell you that when we approved it, I asked them to pay more sales tax to CEO Cupertino, and Apple was gladly to do it. So it was a win-win solution for the city and for Apple. Thank you.
Darcy.
I wish I had an hour to answer this question, because I spent the last five years trying to revitalize the Cupertino economy through promoting small businesses on the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Now, with respect to the infrastructure of any community, economics, even if you have an Apple in town, small businesses are your grassroots of the economy. We've been working with the Small Business Administration on the federal level in the chamber this year to try to bring in more services that can help council entrepreneurs and small businesses to try to improve their access in the, in the city to being able to grow their businesses. But with respect to really what the city can do, we have to make the process fair and efficient. Now, if you do that on a base level, businesses are going to want to be here. And I've spent also the last five years trying, as an attorney, to make the overall landscape just like that, fair and efficient. And if you do that, and I wish I had the hour to really kind of go into the details, but if you do that, the businesses will come. Thank you.
Don.
Yeah, I have run my own business for last 20 years. The best lessons I learned is the city just leave business alone. I think it's the, we have Apple here, it's a brilliant businessman's people, they are going to choose Apple to come in here. As long as we provide the public good and public service fairly, and I believe our city staff has done tremendous good job. Comparing with Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Mulepita's Sunnyvale, all those city I have been working with them, Cupertino is the best city. We can apply for business license very quick, very efficiently. There's no problem. It's the, it's, I agree with Darcy, we promote business, but we don't put too much hands on the small business or big business. People in the business, they are smart, they can make a decision for themselves. And for the Valco Mall, I think it's the, we are going to working with the developer. They know how to build the business there, but the only thing is, we as a citizen of Cupertino, we need to join the open study session to chip in your ideas. So it's, as a city council, we can mingling all the ideas together. Thank you.
Mark.
I think you need to work on diversification. First, most people don't know, Apple's only just over 5% of the city's total budget. So we love them, but they're not the, they're not the whole answer. We worked hard on diversifying things, on trying to attract the right kinds of businesses. When Sand Hill bought the site for what's now Main Street, they asked, what would you want to see there? And I said, the residents want a downtown, and I will work with you if that's what you're willing to give them. I held the, as mayor, I held the first small business workshop in the city to help encourage small business, and Main Street was required to put in some incubator space for small businesses, so hopefully, the next Apple will come from there. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be worked on, and we're continuing to do that. Even the voters here have helped. They approved a higher TOT in the last election. So what we need to do is keep diversifying, keep paying attention to the issues in the city, and keep working on them. Thank you.
Pretty much everyone's already answered what I was going to say, but Main Street is being compared to the new Santana Row. And if you look at Santana Row, they rely on big-box trendy stores to keep them afloat. And if we look back at the grand days of Valco, that's exactly what there were. It was big stores, trendy names, and as we know, trends come and go. And I hope that Main Street isn't going to be set up for a failure in the future by going that route. I'd like to see more mom-and-pop entrepreneur operations in there and give back to the community and not fill the pocket of a corporate company. Thank you.
Savita.
If you build, they'll come, doesn't really work for Valco. But think where you would like to shop, think where your kids go to shop. We have to think in those terms, because if you are thinking at night, where am I going to eat dinner, and you're not thinking of Cupertino, then we are not doing right by our citizens. So we have to turn it around and think in terms of where each of us would like to shop. Would we shop local? And once we think in those terms, then we need to invite those businesses, small businesses absolutely right. And being president of this Rotary Club, I've met with a lot of our business entrepreneurs here in this room. They all talk about the week when we encourage people to shop local. That's when they have a lot of people coming through their store, but it should not just be that one week, it should be throughout the year. And the more we encourage that, the more we can get businesses that will be really successful and flourish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the candidates have been so well behaved, or maybe they're intimidated by Daryl, that we got through the planned questions very quickly. So now, I throw a curveball to the City Channel staff by asking a question that they weren't ready for, but they'll handle it. They're quite flexible. And this is a question that I think people will see as on their mind. It has to do with climate change and drought and all of that. You know, we, some people don't believe in climate change, or don't believe we cause it, or whatever. You got to believe in the drought, because we're not allowed to wash our cars anymore. So the question is this, there's, there are, there are two ways people are approaching this now, trying to stop it, and the other one is called adaptation. It's a new planning idea where you're trying to figure out how to live with it. So, and my question, we'll start with Savita and come down this way, is what's the role of the city leadership in this new of this, of city leadership in, in this new weather that we have, however it was caused?
One of, thank you, Richard, for that question. It goes with my initiative that I, environment is my priority. So I do know that the city has a climate action plan and there are three alternatives. One is community choice energy, one is enhanced voluntary outreach, and the third is mandatory regulations. And when you hear the term mandatory, everyone shakes, so we, we're not going to have that. But the planning commission is studying the other two further. And I do know when it comes to the community choice energy approach, there are other cities in the Bay Area where it, there is demonstrated success where people, if you give them a green energy option, they would like to choose that over, over something that doesn't give them enough green energy. And also it'll, it's easier for you to help change your, change your green energy option without changing the consumer habit. So that's what I would like to recommend. And of course, try and mitigate our traffic option, issues with bike trails and things like that, which will in turn help the environment. Thank you.
Robert?
I believe the city staff has already fulfilled their obligation with the CAP, Climate Action Plan. I believe that the outreach is the number one method to educate people, let them know about drought tolerance landscaping, possibly even give them a tax break on their property tax if they wanted to install it. We need to be green. The city already has a green kit for the homeowners that's available in the library to anyone for free and it has really amazing tools in it to help you reduce your energy usage. And I think that we need to expand that even further. I think we need to go door-to-door. We need to start talking to people. We need to let them know what options are there and how it will benefit the city and the community. Thank you.
Mark?
When I first got on the council, one of the first things I did was propose that we change our streetlights out for more efficient. And the previous council, one of which is in the audience and some members up here, put together a program and we changed out all these streetlights for more efficient streetlights. And we initiated a watering program to save a lot of water that the city's using, so the city can do a lot. We also hired, in my tenure, a green coordinator, Aaron, who has been working diligently on all things green. We've looked at things like plastic bags and styrofoam and things like that. For some reason, we got points for plastic bags, but not for styrofoam. And I suggested it to the council and I think they wisely agreed. That's a good thing to take care of. So it's really the complete environment all on its own. Some of these things take water. For example, if people wanted to ban plastic, you can't go back to paper because it takes a lot of water to make paper. So you need to look at it in its entirety, but, but the city council can in fact do, can and has done a lot to conserve water in the environment.
For the water saving program, Cupertino has been done a lot and also is, we can do a lot too. In Singapore and Japan, there have a lot of high technologies that we can apply. So far, it's the, we meet 100 years drought, but in the future, it's the compare with Japan and Singapore, they have a lot of high tech we didn't apply. We didn't apply in our residence, in our household, in our business. After election, it's, I, I will apply for the, this new tech, working with the city staff and the technology department with the consulting company to work, to apply the new tech about how to saving waters. Thank you.
Darcy?
Yeah, so the drought is a huge problem around here. One of the things that we can do is to take advantage of our abilities to have conversations within the community. One of the things that we've done with respect to the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce for the last year, you wouldn't typically think of it as an entity that would talk about the drought because, you know, ultimately, it's a lot of business concerns, right? But, but this does affect businesses and it does affect the community. So what we've done was we brought in the San Jose Water Company through our Legislative Action Committee, as well as the, a couple of board of directors of the, of the local water district. And so a couple of things I just want to convey to you in, in this time is that one of the things that you can do when you turn on your shower is to put a bucket there while you're waiting for the water to warm up and use that to help water your lawn. And then second, one of the statistics that I found really striking was that when you have all these infrastructural pipes going around town, you lose about 30% of your water. So it, it, it occurs to me that you could probably look into that and kind of encourage that kind of research to see what can be done to save that amount of water. Thanks.
Barry?
Since the drought begin, my wife, my lovely wife Sue is sitting right there, we start saving the water. We don't let the water in the kitchen just drain, you know, down the, the pipe. We put in a basket and then take, carry out and water our plant. So we've been doing that. We have to change the behavior because the drought is coming unless there's more water coming, otherwise, we cannot sustain the way we had before. So I'm, the only candidate served on the water district, Santa Clara Valley Water District, as a advisory board for many years, I've been urging them to do the two things, water conservation and water recycling. Okay? But the movement is very slow, but we cannot rely on them. So the city, what city can do, in my opinion, is on the new building, put a two piping system, one for the drain, one for the really go to the wastewater, one you go for the recycling. So that's what city can do. Thank you.
Final word. Andy?
One school of thought in terms of the drought is because of global warming. And if you look at the root cause of global warming, it's because our dependency on energy such as coal and other means, which is heating up our earth. And of course, the traffic is not helping neither. So in order to solve the problem, we should go to the root cause of the problem. I'm hoping that as a city council, I would like to advocate that we, Cupertino, in addition to have Apple, is our iconic, we should be the iconic city where we will be the first green city where all of our buildings will have solar panels, so we'll be free of energy dependence. We will no longer depend on the usage of coal. And also in addition, as mentioned earlier, we need to reduce our traffic. If we can solve our traffic problem, reduce our dependency on energy, then we can solve the problem by the root cause, instead of solving just the symptom of the problem. Thank you.
I can get you a deal on electric car if you want. So, well, you know, I found that the, I've given a lot of speeches, both here and at City Hall, well, in business too. And I found the most popular phrase I can use is "and in conclusion." So I'm, I'm working on that one now. The, I think it's now the time to show a little appreciation for these guys, they, ladies and gentlemen, for volunteering to help your city be the best city it can be. And it's a, it's a lot of work campaigning, you know, these folks are walking door-to-door, kissing babies and interrupting the Super Bowl and all that stuff and trying, trying to, trying to explain their positions to you. And then it's a lot of work to serve as well, you know? It's campaigning is one thing, governing is another. They're both a big commitment. So, so now's the time you can give them a round of applause. I think we can see that we've got some great candidates. We're, we're lucky. I can remember Phil Johnson, at the end of his term, had to be asked to stay because nobody would run. So, you know, we're, we're lucky to have such great choices to make today. And I hope today, the Rotary Club of Cupertino has helped you be a little more informed about the folks that are in front of us here and, and how to make the wisest choice. It's not like where you have to choose the judge by the last name you like the most or something, which is kind of the way that goes a lot. We're, we're trying to get a step beyond that here by, by letting you meet the candidates. And so, once again, thank you all for being here. The candidate form is adjourned. We'll ask our Rotary President Hung Way to come up and close the meeting.
Okay, you can see, as our former mayor and council member for eight years, Richard has no problem standing on the podium and say what he needs to say and do what he needs to do with a little humor and a little self-introduction too. So I can see that all our candidates here in the future, they are our future leaders of the citizens of Cupertino. So please, join leaders, exchange ideas, and now we can take actions. We really like to thank all seven of them here. I always say, being a local elected official, actually, you have to be elected to volunteer. You're actually essentially looking into the volunteer for us. So we really appreciate your passion and your passion to serve. And so every one of them deserve our really, really good applause. So give them another round of applause. And a, a final word that I would like, I, as a citizen, would like to give to our candidates is, today you might be competitors, but in two years, four years, you might be colleagues. So it's really great to collaborate with each other, to exchange ideas. You're all brilliant, so we depend on you to give us good ideas and to lead our city. Eventually, I know that all seven of them are going to be great volunteers for our city. Thank you. And I'm going to call the meeting. Get the phone. Let me get this out. This meeting is adjourned.